Welcome everybody to the work session tonight. I think it's probably everybody's looked at their attendance already. Looks like it's fairly light, so maybe we won't be here long tonight. Anybody got any questions on the agenda? About percent agenda. Other than that, Mr. Oldham, you want to go to number nine?
You'll have a presentation on number eight. Some of you there may be new board members, some of the others may remember Operation Integrity Head Central made, but they're going to come and make a proposal to you and talk about how they might continue that. That'll be Thursday evening. Number nine is a foreign exchange student, which is our policy 6.502 waiver. A host parent has requested a waiver of the July 15 deadline for foreign exchange students attending Rutherford County School. The requesting student was originally placed with a host family in Springfield, Tennessee, and the placement did not work. The student is now placed with a host family in Rutherford County who resides in the Riverdale school zone. The recommended motion was to allow waiver of July 15 deadline for foreign exchange students attending Rutherford County Schools so this student may attend Riverdale High School or others' own school. I did speak with them today. The student still has not been placed. The family from this student has spent about $15,000 with the exchange group getting him here. And so he's still in Muffinsburg. They haven't found another placement for him. His Riverdale, again, we allow up to four per high school. So Riverdale has three. There is an option there. I guess my heart goes out to the student, in this case, and the family, you know? And for no fault of his own, he is really being tossed about. My thoughts, if we're going to allow this student, then we need to really emphasize July 15 is our deadline. You know, I'm not for bringing him back to you beyond July 15 to do that. And for the obvious reasons you're seeing right now. You know, it creates additional issues for some of these students that they need to be here early enough to get their placement. We need to take a look at maybe some of the exchange organizations that are doing this to get people that really can go by what we have printed in our policy to make it work. But anyway, he is still in this area. They were not able to find another placement at this time.
By allowing this one, I think we've already done this once, and this is number two, to keep this from being an ongoing issue month after month, do we put ourselves in a precedent danger here by allowing this this time?
If the board seeks fit to approve this one, you can approve it. You may want to make notes that this is going to be the exception rather than the rule. And you do have July 15 deadline. You expect everyone to adhere to that. For the particular circumstances for this particular student here, you're willing to grant a waiver. But by no means would that be a precedent setting matter or anything that the foreign exchange program should be deemed to be a variation from your general policy.
Okay.
But if you want to make a specific exception for the specific instance, you could do that.
And I'm sympathetic too, but I'm concerned that this is something that's just going to keep coming down the pike at us. And I'd really like for us to draw a line in the sand. And I really like that the central office is going to take a hard look at some of these organizations because this poor kid, this should never have happened the way it came about.
I agree. Mr. Carr?
I know communication come to me as sure the other board members last Thursday or so, that actually there was an absolute deadline in part that kind of put us in a tight position as well, trying to pull the group and so forth and so on. I assume that the organization didn't pull the plug on it right yet, they indicated that it was likely it was going to happen.
The story with this particular group, the stories have changed and replaced the group. And what we thought was he was going to be pulled, the real thing was that his parents from Brazil are saying, if you don't get him placed, we want him to come home. He's been there a while. We're concerned about our son. So the one that was going to pull the plug, in retrospect now, we've learned, was actually his parents.
Do you understand?
Yes.
I could, as a parent, I could.
Well, let me say this, and I've stated this before, I think I said this the last time we had a discussion, because the one Wayne is deluded to, so forth and so on. I have real place because I've worked with foreign exchange students. I had one from 15 years ago, I guess, and it was just a wonderful, great experience. I like the board concern that we don't want to put ourselves in a position where if you've done it once, it'd go like that. So I, but I'm very much in favor for the individual that's involved. I think the experience that he can get, and even further the experience that the teachers and the other students around him can get, I want us to do that if at all possible. I think in this case it is possible to do, and I'm hopeful that he can take that exception. But I fully agree with what Ben said. We don't need to feel like that we are underdone, that if we do it this time, we've got to do it again, we've got to do it again, we've got to do it again. I think it's well stated in the minutes, I'm sure, will reflect that we have shared that concern, that we don't feel like we have to feel an obligation to it continually.
For our audience and people that might be watching over television, Rutherford County is not, we're not saying that we don't welcome working with foreign exchange students. We have 22 foreign exchange students at Rutherford County Schools this year, so that speaks for itself, our problem with the deadline.
I think, just my personal opinion, I think we ought to hold the organization accountable. They're the ones creating the problem. And it's not the student or his parents. You know, I'm sympathetic to them, you know, the amount of money they put out, you know, to send him here and the whole nine yards. But, you know, I'd like to just look at this organization that placed him, possibly not used him. Anybody else?
When was he displaced from the host home originally? Do you know?
I think it was, Mr. Yonan, I think it was last week when you kind of got that message, I think, that he'd been removed from that one because of a conflict with two students there. It was two foreign exchange students in the same house, one male, one female. And there was objection to that placement from this agency, and so he was moved.
I agree with what everybody's saying here. I feel very sympathetic for the child and the parents, and I just feel like we were kind of misled by the dates, and I don't appreciate that. But I feel very comfortable that we can work through this and take care of the child.
What else? All right, number 10, Mr. Oldham.
Number 10, this again is under facilities, outdoor walking tracks at Buchanan Elementary School, Laverne Lake Elementary School, Stewart's Creek Elementary, and Wilson Elementary. As reported by Ms. Jenna Stitzel, at August 9, 2012, Redwood School Board meeting, she has received grants for construction of previous concrete walking tracks at some of our schools this school year. Four such benefactors are Buchanan Elementary School, Laverne Lake Elementary School, Stewart's Creek Elementary School, and Wilson Elementary School. A 200-meter track will be constructed at these schools with the help of Segal Foundation and Middleton City State University at no cost to Rutherford County School Board. The engineering and construction department will inspect the tracks during construction. These tracks are currently out to bid through the Rutherford County School Purchasing Department and will be brought to the board for approval once received and reviewed by engineering and construction departments. And the motion is to approve construction of 200-meter walking tracks of previous concrete at Buchanan Elementary School, Laverne Lake Elementary Schools, Stewart's Creek Elementary School, and Wilson Elementary School at no cost to the board.
Anybody got any questions? Mr. Carter, you want to speak on any of this?
Other than, this will probably be all that will be built this year, and when we bring them all, and once we get the bids in and for the tracks, we'll be bringing those back to the board for first. But Murphy, Middleton City State University has done a lot with these tracks, and so they're kind of backing off a little bit on their health. So the students will still be working on them, but Middleton City won't be quite as involved to the point where...
Like all other projects, you'll basically be overseeing everything. You and your partner. All right. Any questions? Number 12.
Okay. Do you want to discuss any of 11 tonight?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
This is information, no motion, but Jeff Sandoz provided with an update on Pearson Acquisition of Attendance Software Provider Century Consultants. Century Consultants was the one that provided our Starbase, one that we've been using the last several years. Pearson, the major provider of student attendance software, acquired Century Consultants on July 24, 2012. Century provides our Starbase Attendance Software and Star Parent Portal. The Starbase product will not be supported after this school year. We are hearing that Pearson's PowerSchool will be the state's hosted program, or in the early stages of planning for a conversion to PowerSchool. Right now, the state hosts our Starbase data. Let me stop there and explain to you that if I could. In the, for the last several years, we did not have to purchase a server to host the Starbase student management system. The state has the server, they're secure side. The software that operates it is there, and the database is there. What has happened was when Century was the one that was contracting with the state, Pearson then purchased Starbase. Now Pearson's purchased server. They've owned PowerSchool for a number of years. They own Chancery. They own another one that I think Chattanooga was doing. They're actually purchasing up student management systems. You can go out for a bid for any vendor. Here's the problem that you run into. Tennessee has some very specific requirements. Mr. Nipper, you can really relate to this, about how the data has to be stored and transmitted to them with education information system. We're talking about maybe the field length has to be 24 characters long for this, 18 characters long in that. If you go out and bid separate and apart from that as a vendor nationwide or something, chances are if they have to modify their system, what's happened in the past, you have to pay for their modifications. If we use something that's being used across Tennessee somewhat, PowerSchool is now been used for several years in Bedford County, been used in Warren County and all, they are already aligned to Tennessee's requirement. So that helps control your costs some. Now, we do not know specifically at this time if the state will choose to continue to host on their servers. If they do not, there will be additional costs to us whichever way we go to have a server. It also uses an Oracle database, and typically you have to have somebody that's trained in Oracle to massage that database pretty much daily. So there may be some other hidden costs, but let me continue on when you ask other questions you'd like. The 2012-13 budget covers Starbase 2012-13 at a cost of $255 per student, and we have already paid for Parent Portal for the From First to the Top Fund. But 2013-14, Pearson is offering a first-year base fee of $250 per student and waiving the $18 per student perpetual license. We anticipate that the cost per student will increase to around $4 over the next three years. Our combined cost for Starbase and Parent Portal is about already $4 and a nickel per student. Pearson also projects $79,800 for professional services and training. We cannot use First to the Top Funds to pay for these costs. Regardless of whichever company you go with, there will be training costs associated with it. It won't matter particularly if it's this one or another one. That cost will probably be close to the same. We also need to plan on a data conversion for all of our Starbase data at a cost of $1,500 per school or $67,500. This is a necessary expenditure so we can provide transcripts and other needed reporting, in which it allows the high schools to go back and print prior year's transcripts of students' data, students that have already graduated. We'll also have to amend additional hours for training our attendance clerks. What Jeff is saying to you here, these are some initial estimated costs. We do not, we've not got an agreement with Pearson for PowerSchool. We did make a trip about a couple of weeks ago over to Bedford County and watched them operate. That is a really nice system. You know, when we were talking about, we were having trouble with getting our information into EIS. We asked them how many students they had that were not loading into EIS using PowerSchool. I believe it was three students. And the people, I talked to people in Warren County, and they had less than 10 students also that wouldn't load, but we were having close to 1,000. So it's certainly a more rigorous program. The parent portion, Parent Portal, which cost us about $60,000 for rates of technology to provide, so parents can come in and look at student grades, that sort of thing, is built into PowerSchool. There's no additional cost for that feature for parents to be able to look into attendance, discipline, grades, and that sort of thing. But he's giving you an update, and we need to know more from the state, what they plan to do. But chances are, we're going to have to make some decision near the first of the year or something, or as quick as we can to get in line for training and other factors related to that. Any other question?
How does all the student information transition from Star over to PowerSchool?
They can do a conversion because they've done it before. So they write a program that actually takes, even if it's different field lengths, they write a program for specific fields of data and transport from one software program to another. That's kind of a one-time thing to get that information in. And what they're suggesting here is that we do multiple years. That would be that $1,500 per school to do that conversion so you can retain the courses and grades and information about the students in prior years. But software writers just write a program to actually convert to the other. Mr. Nipper can tell us since he does some of that.
He does, he's... But still, they're not providing the server or the redundancy locations to secure the information. That's still going through the state, is that correct?
At this time, it's going through the state. I would prefer that the state would choose to host it again for several reasons. They have good firewalls for security to do it. They would be maintaining the hardware. They would provide the personnel to update and deal with Oracle database. I think it would be very beneficial to Rutherford County to more contract with the state if they choose to do this. We do not know yet if that's going to be their decision to do it. If not, then we're caught, and we'll probably have to do it.
At the point that I got out, Horizon was just in on its days out. Star started a year after I got out, and heard so much fuss and complaining and so forth and so on. But it was my understanding that the reason Star was there is because all schools and states were going to require it to deal with the Star system, but that apparently is not the case. And I do know there are other schools that are using PowerSchool, as you mentioned, and some others. But I agree that that was the point of Star.
The state was limited on the fact of requiring everybody. The state required, what they did is they required everybody to use software that could be transmit their data up to the state education information system. The state's education information system was partially required by the federal government. They said states have to have data systems that will transmit up to the federal system. And so it's kind of a domino. And so anybody that PowerSchool and others that were competing, and one thing they had to sign off on the state, if you're not going to use Star that the state paid for. You know, basically, the $255 we're paying was really support. And the state paid for the program and did that. And any changes that were made, the state paid for reprogramming changes to new fields or field links, it was all done by the state. That's one of the advantages of going with the state was for us.
Mr. Oldham, a couple of questions I have. Do we know when the states got to make their decision?
I was with a fellow last week, someone went to the director's thing. I got a chance to meet him. I think he's pulling a committee together to try to do it. I mean, it is basically the end of this year. The state said, we're going to stop and support the end of this year. Pearson is saying that they will continue people, since they've pressed to use Star another year, but they will not make modifications or support it. And that becomes really dangerous because virtually every year, there are changes to the database per state requirement. So for all practical purposes, come the end of June, it's going to be over. So I hope the state acts on it quickly.
Okay. And do we have any idea what would be the hardware cost if we, if the state didn't take it and we had to carry it in-house?
I think Mr. Solomon met with us, and he did go to Bedford County. Bedford County was able to do it, but it's about an 8,000 student database versus our 40,000. Even with 40,000 active, you start, you wind up with 60,000 names with people coming and going very quickly if you understand what we're talking about. So he can, I can get him to kind of estimate that and see for us if we want to make a note, Ms. Joyce, and see about how much server capacity based upon requirements of that system.
Okay. I mean, not just, you know, the server is going to take a lot of things around it, you know, backups and stuff, so it would really be good to know, you know, the cost.
We currently have a backup system where we back up all of our data from all of our, even our emails, we archive and that sort of thing. So we may have to expand the capacity of the backup system, but I think most of the hardware that drives it's in place, it's maybe the storage capacity that might change somewhat.
Okay.
Mr. Oldham?
I'll ask Ms. Barnes to step up a little bit. This is the insurance update. I think you asked for several periodically that we come forward and talk about insurance, and since October the 1st is another trigger date for some insurance changes. Ms. Barnes, would you kind of share that?
Yes, sir. Sure will. Every year, we host an open enrollment period for our employees to make changes or to add the health benefits if they're not already enrolled in that program. So this gives employees an opportunity to revise what they currently have, to make personal decisions, and to make those changes during that timeframe. So you may have received a mail-out already. I understand from the insurance department that they have started mailing out the packets to all employees, and it'll be in the packet with all of the information in there in preparation for this open enrollment period. We have scheduled 45 meetings, one at every school site. We'll also have two meetings here at the central office at different times of the day for our employees that work out of the central office. And of course, any employee can go to any meeting should they have to miss one that's scheduled for their school site, which is why that list of meetings will also be included in the packet. Our Rutherford County Government will also host meetings for their employees. So our employees are free to go to one of those if they need to, if they have to miss one of their meetings. But in essence, because we're a self-funded insurance program, we have to annually collect adequate premiums to cover the cost of our plan. So they do an actuarial review every year of the population claims and then an expenditures projection. And based on those projections, and to be, and to maintain a fiscally responsible program, we have to look at premium increases periodically. And I believe it's been three years since we've had an increase in the program. Just so you'll know, the plan has an 88% county contribution and a 12% employee contribution. So that gives you an idea of the amounts that each group pays. These changes always include retirees because they, when the insurance premium goes up for employees, it also goes up for retirees. Again, the mail-outs are going out, and you have a packet at the table with all of the information. I've included the cover sheet from the mail-out booklet that gives you an update of all the changes that we're going to be seeing this year. Several things are going to happen, which is why they're having the meetings at all of the schools this year, because they're actually going to eliminate option one, and they're adding a new plan called a co-pay plan. We'll keep option two, and it's being renamed OAP. I'm not sure why we renamed it, but that's the change. And then, of course, we'll still keep option three, which is no cost to employees. They're also going to roll out a new long-term care benefit that provides long-term care up to age, I think 121, for employees if they're interested in doing something like that to protect themselves when they become aged and need assistance like that for a long-term care benefit. So all of the information is there for you, but I think most importantly, we're getting ready to roll out these meetings because, and we really mandate that employees attend these meetings because we need everyone to understand what the changes are so they can make informed decisions when they have to go in and make any changes or continue to accept the premiums and the plan that they currently have in place. If I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to do that.
So yeah, as far as the meetings go, when do you do those at school?
Yes, sir. We schedule, and we work with each principal, and we look at their time of dismissal, try to give a 15 or 20-minute window so teachers can be cleared of all their duties, and then we schedule the meetings for that time. And we did that back in July, cleared it with all the principals so they could get it posted in this booklet.
Is the long-term care benefit new?
Yes, sir. It is new.
I didn't think I...
And that's why, I don't think that I can adequately explain it to you, but I did give you the paragraph on that cover sheet.
I think 15, 20 bucks, and I probably won't cover that.
Probably not. But it is something that felt was really looking at the lifespan of people now and helping provide that kind of benefit for people, and it's a voluntary benefit.
It's a good thing.
Okay.
Mike?
Thank you.
Third time.
Third time is collaborative conferencing committee, and this is again is for information only. There's been some changes in names, some on our side, but several on the Rutherford Education Association's name. So pursuant to section 495605, Professional Teachers Group and Board of Education are required to name members appointed to the collaborative conferencing committee following a majority vote to initiate collaborative conferencing. The list has been updated and reflects current members. And from the Board of Education, decided that we appoint Paula Barnes, Joe Marlin, Kim Day, Fred Barlow, Jeannie Nicholson, Richard Zago, and Kelly Goustrey. And the Rutherford Education Association has named Derek Bowman, Emily Mitchell, Alan Nichols, Patrick Britt, Diana Brown, Carol Hawkins, and Sandra Mogu.
Any questions?
I thought the chairman of the board had to be on that committee. I'm kidding, Ms. Carter.
But in jest, that does raise a question. Are board members not eligible to be? Is it not appropriate to be? Is it not desirable for someone on the board to be on that committee?
Board members are eligible to be. The decision from our board last year was that we would appoint management personnel from within the central office and principals to be part of that rather than board members. Because ultimately, the information will come to you.
Well, I guess I don't recall that that was going in that direction, because I do think it would be, personally, I think it would be a good idea to have board members in. It provides a different perspective at one stage. So I guess I missed that part of it. I must have slept through it. But I personally think it would be a good idea to do that.
How are we limited on the number of members? Is there a limit or something on that?
The state plan that was created by toss says that you can have from seven to 11 members. We opted for seven because we considered 14 people sitting around the table conferencing was enough to try to accomplish that task.
If it is, please bring it up, because I see eyes where...
But this is a public meeting, so...
It is.
All seven of us could sit out in the audience and watch.
Absolutely, you could. And we met on September the 12th for our first meeting to set our ground rules, and we talked about the day of the week, the timeframe that we would allow for meetings, and we set some tentative dates, so I'll get those to you. Set some ground rules for discussion and for trying to reach consensus and things like that. So we had a very productive first meeting.
I'm just, Mr. Carr, you're right, it's a good point. I'm just curious, the other board members, you know, how you feel about it. Feel strong one way or another, or now it's time to, places to look at it.
I believe it would be wise...
I believe it would be wise if a school board member would be there and at least be on the committee with them. Because that would make the teachers feel like they are having more of a direct line with us than just us going, being there and it's like a third-party situation. But it would be more if that person was there in case not all, the rest of us could not make it to the regular meetings.
One of those situations, again, where if one board member is present, there's also the, the challenge of does that board member speak for themselves or do they speak for the board in their, in their position in the room? It's hard for a board member to be there and do anything other than reflect what could be their feelings and such in a, in a board meeting. Because of that awkward circumstance, I think Ms. Barnes keeping us very aware of, of the circum, of, of what goes on there may be the best course of action and I know it's what we've discussed in the past.
I mean, I, I think when you have an authority figure like a board member or somebody like that in a meeting, some other ones would tend to look for that person to take the lead. And, and it would make it, like you said, Erin, it'd make it awkward for the whole group, I think, or could.
The other, other side of that, I, and I can't recall which the, me, the national school board convention I went to, but I thought they made a very good point to try to make sure that we, had extra pronouns, that it's a, it's a we situation, not a they situation. And, and that's what I'd like to make sure we are here. And I'm confident that these seven people would do that on, on the, on the board side. But, you know, I, I think that, I think it is possible that someone on the board should be there and, and, and continue that it's a we trying to collaborate as opposed to an adversarial, you versus us on each side of the table. So I, I think it could be beneficial.
You know, the cool thing from my perspective is even when we were in the so-called adversarial meetings, the, both sides continue to be professional, were able to work through some of the issues. And, you know, I think we've, we've had a really good track record here in Rutherford County with, with the negotiation part in the past and now the collaborative conferencing part now. So I, I, with the track record we've had in the past, I, I, I'm very hopeful that we'll continue that practice that we've had in the past too.
How about you, Cole?
I think it's fish boys that help you out. I mean, we need to get involved, I mean, we, we need to get involved, we can go to the meeting and listen to what's going on. I'm afraid we're a house market.
I can go either, just personally, I'd go either way. I think there's points good on both sides. I guess if somebody feels strongly about it Thursday night, then bring it up and we can progress further if we need to.
Since I brought it up, I'll, I'll say this. I had heard of conference with the seven members of the board, of the board side, will carry the ball and, and handle that each friend as well. And I, I just think it, it, maybe we can monitor through this process and if we see some benefit, you know, in the future, if someone on the board be there. I, I clearly think it could work. I clearly think it could be beneficial. As a matter of fact, in my view right now, I think it would be beneficial. But I have every confidence that where we're at right now, we can move forward with it and just monitor and see if we can make it better by someone on the board being part of it in the future.
Fourteen, I think, is maybe the board chair, board appointments for the Federal Relations Network and Tennessee Legislative Network.
Yeah, Joyce mentioned that to me today. It's my responsibility, I guess, to appoint somebody for that. And the only person, only board member I've had approach me on, on this, I know the new board members probably aren't really aware of where it is, but Mr. Breyer's approached me, he did it, I guess, the last four years. He works with TSBA down there. You hold, what, what office do you hold?
I've been, I've been on the executive committee. I've also been on the legislative committee and, and I still continue to, for, for the, for our district is pretty much the liaison for legislative issues between the executive committee and the members of the mid-comp.
That's, that's state and the federal.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I, I think you've participated in the Washington deal several times.
Yes, sir.
With legislators. So if, if no other board member has any objections, you know, I'd like to see Mr. Breyer do it and, you know. You know, I can put it in a form of motion or whatever Thursday night maybe, but if, if board members don't have a problem with it, I'd like, like to see you continue on since you've got interest in it.
Any questions?
Just a, a thought. Wayne, at the last TSBA meeting, didn't they change the nature of the federal committee just a little bit? Is it a little bit different now?
Uh, yeah, we had, you know, we had a separate group that advised the executive board and, and it got to be cumbersome because of the, the, it was easy for me to attend, but they were not paying for the expenses of, of people from Shelby County and Knox County or coming from all over the state. And the attendance from those individuals were a little haphazard at best. So basically, we went to a, someone representing each of the districts and then we communicated with those individuals. So I loaded in probably about a hundred different board members into my computer and, and when I got the alert from our legislative professional, then I would shotgun out to everybody, you know, for a heads up or, you know, a call to arms, if you will. So, so it's a, it's a little more direct line of communication with the legislative person, Lee Harrell, than, than it has been in the past.
Uh, number fifteen, general discussion. Mr. Tucker?
I know we've got one interesting party in, in our audience tonight about the entrance, exit situation, the new high school situation. And I, I'm just curious, what is that process? How is that process done to develop more roads, more in, how roads go in and out, how we, how we handle that? I'm just curious as to what the procedure is, if there's additional helpers needed out there. If that's the case, what, what's the procedure that's going to happen?
You want to address it, Mr. Cardy? We didn't have discussed it.
Well, we'd, even when we built the first two schools there, we felt like we needed another exit out of the school at that time. And of course, the board voted against going out Gossit Drive. And Foxland came up briefly during those times. But we felt like at that time, we would have to put a lot of extra road in without the high school being there and really didn't have the funds, so we didn't pursue that. But Gossit was right on, close to the property line already. We have recently received a letter from the emergency management of Rutherford County that told us that we needed to pursue there, have an extra outlet out, actually two outlets, and then a, you know, a third one that's kind of reserved, plus the two that are there. One out on Popperwood and one out on Morton on the other end. Because of the safety issues of evacuating the site if there was a catastrophic event there. So we started pursuing that, we've looked at it, we've discussed it with the Smyrna, town of Smyrna people. They have basically said that they would support us in whatever we did, although they didn't want to take the lead on it because they knew it would, you know, kind of be like opening up a hornet's nest. So we told them that we would take the lead on it. So we, we're looking into the cost of it at this point. And I just feel like, and Jeff Reed may be the one to answer this question. I feel like with the emergency management people telling us that we should open that, I feel like we should take their advice. And I don't know what the legal ramifications are if we don't take their advice.
Well, a lot of it's going to depend on the details with respect to what recommendations the emergency management services has with respect to the entrance ways. So it's something the school system will have to look at carefully to examine what options are available, may, what may be the best way to accomplish any concerns that EMS has with respect to access to the school site. But obviously, if, the more access you have to the school site, the better off you are from a liability situation should something catastrophic happen at the school. So if you had, the more avenues you have for emergency vehicles to get to and from your school, the better off you are. So certainly it's beneficial from a liability standpoint to have ready access to the school should, should you need that. Now, the school system may want to look at doing gates or Yelp devices or things like that that you might could do that would limit those other accesses to the school to EMS vehicles only. So that may be an option to look at. But I think until we get to the details and look in the big picture, I don't know if we have anything concrete that we can really propose at this point. But it does require some study, some thought and, or there are some issues there that the board should be aware of and be willing to address.
And I met with a pretty good-sized group of residents Saturday evening and was given a large number of concerns about what an entrance way down a thoroughfare, if you will, through Foxland Drive or through Gossit, you know, how it would impact, you know, the quality of life in that subdivision in the neighborhood. So what I did assure the, the residents is that, just what Mr. Reed said, that we would, we would look at alternatives, we would, we would study it and, and see if there was some, some compromise through, if through gates or, or whatever that, that we could keep from changing their, again, their quality of life. But, but I did make it clear that, you know, our first and paramount priority is the safety of our children and the safety of our employees and anybody else visiting that campus if, if a situation was to, to occur. So I'm confident with Mr. Cardy and Mr. Reed and all of us being interested in serving all the residents that we'll, we'll come up with the best decision we can.
If I can add something here on, Wilson County just opened up their new high school this year with two entrances, one coming off of, of a highway and one that was coming through a neighborhood. Then coming through the neighborhood got so bad that the city shut it down. So that gave one, one entrance and exit to come in and out. Children, juniors and seniors who've been driving has been averaging, taking them an hour to an hour and a half to get in, get parked and get to their classes, or two hours to get out of the parking lot. It's a mess over there and they're having to fight now to find another entrance exit. So, I mean, we could go take a look at them and see what they're doing, but, so.
Sounds like they have their own problems.
They do. They do.
That's what I was going to say, doesn't, doesn't sound like what they, what they're doing now is working, so.
Right.
Just my personal opinion, I, I trust Mr. Cardy, he'll stay on top of this and keep us apprised.
We, we have a group of engineers that's studying that right now. And of course, we've looked at a couple of options of going out the other way on the back, but we, you know, we struggled, we struggled all the way through with the fund for the project. That would be quite an expensive feat to get that done. I don't think we could get the money for it. But I do have a group of engineers looking at it now and we're trying to decide and I'll, soon as we reach some decisions and think we've got the best solution, we will bring that forward to you. And that should be forthcoming by the end of the year.
Okay. How's your, how's your traffic down there now?
It's, it's not too bad. Mister, the two principals at the school, Mr. Zago, I haven't really checked too much this year, but in prior years, he's been able to empty out his end relatively easy and so has the principal at the middle school. And it's, it worked pretty good. But there's probably eighty percent of families that are dropping their children off out there. And there's only twenty percent riding the bus. So since, for instance, in, in my thinking, since Foxland is not a road that's been paid for heavy-duty traffic, you can take the buses out that way anyway. So it would be mainly automobile traffic if, in fact, that came, came up. But Morton Road and the Red Hawk Drive are for heavy-duty and there will be some heavy-duty traffic pavement around the building. So all of those things have to be considered and hopefully we'll have a solution by the end of the year and then we will present what we think's the best move to make on that.
Any comments on that?
I think you were planning a trip with the board members to go look at some schools and give these opportunities to ride that day to take a look and see some of that, so the rest of you can kind of see on-site, see what we're talking about.
Yeah, I did. I'd just like to mention one thing. I think everybody's got a thing here on, and I'll mention it again Thursday night on St. Paul High School. They've got their homecoming, it looks like, this Friday, the twenty-first, and they're going to dedicate the stadium in, on, to Kenno. So I just figured I'd like to put that out. Yeah, I think that's an honor, honor for him. One other thing, I, Mr. Oldham passed out a timeline for staff and I think somebody had questions on it. So if you want to go over any part of that or any board members have any questions, we can discuss that now if you want to.
Basically, what we're saying, the, the principal will be posted on the first of October, probably about around the middle of October. Next week, we should have a principal named and that principal will then start. Dealing with secretary position, there's some assistant principals and all that start by January one. So begin to put that in place. This will allow the principal in October to be in place before, at T double S double A, when they start those assignments, you know, in mid-November. So the other process then is. So the other process then is, is once the zoning is complete, that you've been able to vote on that, we have some preliminary numbers. Then we start looking at the number of staff. Typically, what we do is allow teachers or people that would like to have an opportunity to move, in some cases, it's closer to their home. But basically, staff will move with students. We'll adjust staff numbers commensurate with the number of students that may be leaving and coming. I did mention to you once before, we will watch so that we're not taking the whole math department from one school or something like that, that we'll have to do some balancing in that situation. We work as close as we can to let teachers make some choices and still have the balances and all that we need to do. But that, that becomes a good bit of the spring, that process starts occurring. And one other thing, before we finish, I want to mention before you do your gavel today. I, I know most of you may have seen this morning's dead and used journal editorial. But I, I just wanted to say that that, that was a very well-written editorial and a real good compliment to this board for those that have left us, the three that are gone, those of you that are back with you about what you were able to accomplish in the last several years. But it, it was just very nice and well-received, well-written accomplishment of, of what you've done. So if you haven't had a chance to look at that editorial today, take a look at it. It's very, and speaks very well of, of what you've done.
Are we still, are we hearing board comments now?
Yes, sir.
I guess everybody saw the state taking a stick to Metro for not following their directions on, on this magnet school situation there. And vouchers and ma, and, not magnet, charter schools, excuse me. Going to be a tremendous issue this legislative year. The, there's a couple of programs out there putting a lot of money into legislative campaigns trying to push vouchers and charter schools. And we've all been reading about how they're not the, the answer because most don't do as well and some do as well as public schools, but very few do better. And, and for the life of me, I don't understand how voucher is going to, to help a, an at-risk child who has no transportation. And so we certainly need to be staying in touch with our local legislators because a lot of money is coming from, I think they're called First Student and another organization, I can't think of the name right now, but they're, they're pouring a lot of money into trying to force the, these two programs on the education system here in Tennessee. And, and it's certainly to, to the public school detriment if they're successful.
I think Ms. Michael, she's getting that lined up right now for October sometime with state legislators, so looking to hold a joint meeting with the city school board also. And I think so far, you've had, you've had some of them.
Two responses.
Okay. I, I think we'll be good. I believe she's given two or three different dates and I think all that's going to materialize out, so she'll keep us updated on the exact date and everything. Anything else?
I just want to echo exactly what Wayne said there, that the race to the top funding that Tennessee was awarded has really put our educational system in the spotlight. And what happens here certainly does have a reflection, perhaps nationwide, and is one of the exemplary systems. I think it's very much to our credit that currently we do not have any charter schools in this area. And I think that it's a credit to the very, very efficient. I continue to be overwhelmingly impressed with the cost per pupil that we deliver the exemplary education. It's one thing to deliver the exemplary education, but to do it for such an outstanding cost per student ratio is just an incredible compliment to the central office staff and, and every person in every school and the students and parents who are participating as well. There is no end to the, the appreciation and praise that should go to those folks.
County Commission allowed me to address them the other night and they actually, we talked briefly about the accomplishments and the awards and some of the things that we wanted. They gave a good ovation to us. I think they recognized it themselves too. We weren't asking for any money that evening, but thanking them for their support for what they were doing. They, they were very open and appreciative of it all, so.
Where are we, where are we right now?
In, in spending, we do, we do not have a new report card. It was nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars less than the state average last year in pro-pupil expenditure for educational monies. And, and incidentally, I told you earlier that we, they were going to try to get the report card out in September and they told us last week, it looks like it's going to be the first of November. So we're back at about the same date as been in prior years.
Imagine that.
Anything else? We'll see everybody Thursday night at five.
We're joined.